Woguan, Detroit. My name is Sophia Chu, and it's my honor and pleasure to be a part of this press conference today. The City of Detroit COVID-19 Undocu Fund Press Conference. As a Black immigrant, U.S. Army War Veteran, U.S. Citizen, and City of Detroit resident, I am proud and honored to stand with my fellow villagers in this human race to celebrate this moment. A high point in this time of trials and tribulations in our beloved country. Research from the last census mentioned that there are approximately 11.3 million undocumented people in the USA, with a large number of them being in the hospitality industry. Majority are essential workers in vital industries such as transportation, farming, construction, and food services. Many of them pay taxes, whether federal, state, and city taxes in addition to sales taxes. We cannot lose sight of our humanity, which is to take care of each other during difficult times. Not only is it the right thing to do, but it's the human thing to do. Sorry about that, that's what happens with cell phones sometimes. But we have to help each other out in our greatest need. What I'm going to do first is to introduce you to the City of Detroit Councilwoman and Chairperson of the Immigration Task Force, Ms. Raquel Castaneda Lopez. She's going to tell us a little bit about the fund itself and about the great team, collective community team, that worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make this day possible. Raquel?
So, good morning, everyone. This is my first press conference with a mask, so hopefully I got it. So we are super excited to be here today to announce the unveiling of the COVID-19 Undocu Fund in the City of Detroit. This fund is $750,000, and that is due to a generous donation from the Open Societies Foundation. We are incredibly honored to be selected as one of the cities in the United States to launch a fund, and we are even more honored to be a city that's dedicated specifically to supporting and serving the undocumented community. So that decision was very intentional on our end as a council office as well as the Immigration Task Force. We know that throughout the country, there is roughly 15.4 million families and individuals of mixed status who were not supported by federal CARE Act money. They were left out of the programs created to support other families throughout the pandemic. We know that in the City of Detroit, about 6.1% of our percent are immigrants, and we estimate of that 6.1%, roughly 8,000 to 20,000 may be mixed status or undocumented themselves. Given that, we knew that we had to do something to step up to make sure that these families were being supported. As Sophia mentioned, these are our residents, our neighbors, our family members, and they are tax-paying Americans regardless of their immigration status. They pay into our society, and they deserve to be supported. So we were really lucky to make the connection with the Open Society Foundation through actually a relationship that my chief of staff had with transatlantic communities. I just want to highlight that as Trump seeks to close down our borders, it is really important that we keep them open to promote and foster international relationships and transatlantic exchange because that brings so much value to us here locally. So through that connection, we are able to connect with the Office of the Mayor and the Grants Management Department to create this fund. And I want to give a huge shout-out to all of the members of the Immigration Task Force that are here today, from Global Detroit to the Office of Immigrant Affairs to New Michigan Media, to Accounting Aid Society, to Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation. You'll hear for some of these folks today. But it really was a team of people meeting for like four to six hours a week, three times a week sometimes, over the last six weeks to come up with this program from scratch. And again, the focus was always about equity, equity and family and love, and making sure that the families here in the City of Detroit, regardless of their immigration status, would have access to these funds. So we know that the pandemic does not discriminate based on race, ethnicity, nationality, but unfortunately, our federal government does. So this fund is an attempt to right the wrong committed by our federal government and make sure that nobody is left behind. We know we are only as safe as the members of our communities who are most at risk. And this fund is created to address the inequities of the dispersments that have happened so far with COVID-19 stimulus funds and to provide much-needed relief to our neighbors, making sure that we're supporting again all Detroiters, families, and kids that contribute so much to our communities regardless of their immigration status. So with that, this would not have been possible without the support of the Office of Immigrant Affairs and the Office of the Mayor. And again, we hope that this initial donation from the Open Societies Foundation is just the seed bunny and hope to leverage this to get additional funds to make this a long-term sustainable fund. And with that, I would like to bring up the mayor to talk about just the importance of this partnership of council and mayor working so closely together, but really the importance of our immigrant families that live in our community and how much they contribute to us.
Councilmember Raquel Castaneda Lopez deserves enormous credit for her leadership on this issue. COVID has hit us in ways we never could have imagined, and while probably 10% of Detroiters have been affected, virtually all Detroiters have been affected economically. And the federal government has actually done some good things, the $1,200 stimulus check, the extra $600 a week in unemployment benefits, and a number of private foundations have done well. But as the council member said, those who are undocumented are just as much at risk for the disease and probably suffered economically even more, and yet they didn't have the ability to fight back on that pain and that hardship with stimulus checks and unemployment checks because of their status. And that's a difficult question. If the city government tried to step in, we would create a list of undocumented members who I think very likely the federal government would come in and take. And so you have a difficult situation. How do you help folks who very much have the need and not cause them greater problems? And as I think the people up here all know, this has always been personal to me. My grandmother's family immigrated and settled in this neighborhood in Detroit. My family's roots are here at a time where the country did not treat immigrants as we are today. And so with the initiative by the council member, the support of the Open Society Foundation, the Immigrant Task Force, and Serene Abu Shakra and the Detroit Office of Grants, we put in the application $750,000 from the Open Society Foundation. But again, the city is not going to take that money. The money is going to be handled here by Angie Reyes and the Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation, who will work through nonprofits in the neighborhoods. So if you are an undocumented member of our community, you can go directly to your nonprofits, you can apply for assistance, and there will be help for you. And we're hoping to go get other private foundations to match this. And we want to deliver a message that you're an important part of our community, and the fact that you're undocumented doesn't mean the City of Detroit is uncaring for you. And so with the kind of partnership that we have here, I think we've taken a step forward. And this is what happens when we're not fighting with each other, when we all pull together, and this is a cause that we all agree on. And with that, I'll turn it back over to our Master Ceremony Sophia.
So we talked about partnership, we talked about collaboration, and that's what makes America a great place, and that what makes the City of Detroit a wonderful city to live in. So we may look different, we may sound different, but we're all humans. With that being said, a huge part of this, putting together this process, we had to ensure that we have the right partners in place because what we don't want to do is make our undocumented feel further unsafe as we attempt to help them. So we were so grateful that the Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation is a part of this process with us. And to tell you a little bit more about it and how this will work, I'll introduce Angie Reyes, who's the Executive Director of this beautiful building that we're standing in. Angie?
It's my honor to be here today and to have been asked to serve in the role of the fiscal sponsor. Before I talk a little bit about how the fund works, I just want to put a plug in for making sure that everybody fills out the census because this is one of those areas where it's so important that we get be counted in the City of Detroit so we can get resources in. So the Undocu Fund, which is what we're referring to this fund for, is going to be administered by Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation through various ones of our partners. And I just want to make sure that people know that this is not only for the Latino community. A lot of times when people talk about immigrants, they think only of Latinos. This is also going to be helping the West African, Caribbean, Arab, and Bengali communities in the City of Detroit. The City of Detroit is much more diverse than many people realize. So we'll be working with four trusted community partners that will be directly working with people in their individual communities. Those organizations are Abissa, Global Detroit, Islamic Center of Detroit, and One Michigan. So in addition to DHSC, those other four organizations will all be working directly in their community to get the money into the hands of the people who need it the most. The process is easy, it's confidential, only the people who work in those organizations will have the information of the people who are applying. That information won't go anywhere else. Nobody in the city and government will have it, so it will be very safe and confidential for people. And folks will be able to reach out to any one of the five organizations that I mentioned to get help. So you can either call them, we have information flyers that have everybody's phone number and website where you can go and request assistance. And I think the one-pager is there. This is Cindy Gamboa, Director of Community Organizing, who sits on the Immigration Task Force.
Hola. Quería avisarles, si usted es un indocumentado y quiere aplicar para asistencia, por favor hable a una de estas organizaciones para ayuda. Las organizaciones son Global Detroit, Abissa, One Michigan of Immigrant Rights, Islamic Center of Detroit, y también nuestro Centro Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation. Puede buscar la información en sus sitios, en sus redes sociales, o en sus sitios de web. Gracias.
So as Angie mentioned, undocumented doesn't have a particular face. They are Hispanics, they're Blacks, they're Bengalis. They may be very well in the room with you, and you don't know. Because what we have to do is to ensure that all our citizens are safe and all our citizens are taken care of. So what I'm going to do now is to introduce you to one of the partners that will be involved with representing the Black immigrant perspective as regards this Undocu Fund. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sadie Sar with Abissa.
Assalamualaikum. Thank you, Sophia. Nangendef, wa Detroit. Como vous allez la ville de Detroit? So today we are here to reinforce the values of equity, right? Because we know that the pandemic does not discriminate based on immigration status. Our federal government did, actually. We also know that we live in a time that is very uncharted. We live in a time where my Black siblings are still talking about the value of their life. And we also know that the same system that dehumanize and kill Black bodies is the one that dehumanize our families without legal statuses. So today, the City of Detroit, the Immigration Task Force in Detroit, the OSF, have partnered together with organizations that represent immigrants to stand for our immigrant neighbors and to know that it's more than immigration, it's also about doing the right thing. For example, the city have more than 200 businesses that are hair braiders. When the government decided to shut down, they were the first one who was asked to went home because they were not essential workers. So you would see somebody like Astu, whose husband was deported, whose only way of having an income was to go and braid hair. When the braiding shop closed, she went home. Her kids that are at the public school also came home with her. She can't drive because she don't have a driver license. So she was at home with no income and no other way to make an income either. When the stimulus check came about, her American children did not receive the 600 because that's considered a mixed status families. And she had been home since March. So these are the community members that we are looking out for, that we are trying to help get at least their head out of the water as we are still trying to figure out what we are going to do, when are we reopening, and how we are reopening. So thank you to all my friends that have been in this process with us to make sure that we still held the hands of those that were totally forgotten. Somon bo ki de mogo ngan xamne, Detroit Undocu Fund be defa safe. Solen newo we, wolen woe Global Detroit, wolen woe DHDC, wolen woe ICD, dingen am informasyon bengen sohlo. Sen tou, fingendek, nangendek Detroit, lore len sohlo. Lo sun ko amed nlini diapale, bengen menojot, chindimbe len xamne. Momle OSF, Ad Detroit Immigration Task Force, ladlen indi. Kon danglen newo paska afabe safe, ne? Ken dulen bole akwakel gomak. Donk, a tout mes amis et mes frères et sœurs de la ville de Detroit, tous les immigrants qui sont ici, je vous prie de bien vouloir nous appeler. Donk, appelez Abissa, appelez Global Detroit, appelez DHDC, appelez ICD. Parce que ce fonds que nous avons aujourd'hui, qui s'appelle Undocu Fund de Detroit, est très secure. Donk, on prendra des informations minimales, mais c'est une manière de vous aider en fait à vous retrouver, à aider un peu vos familles à mettre un peu de manger sur votre table, à essayer de payer un peu d'électricité, à vous supporter du mieux qu'on peut. Donk, appelez-nous parce que c'est très secure, et nous sommes là pour vous. Thank you very much, and have a blessed afternoon.
So I hope you guys got everything that she said, right? In the many languages that she speaks. I try to keep up with her with English, and that's enough. So another one of our partners is Safwan Nahab. He is Executive Director at the Islamic Center of Detroit. He's going to tell you a little bit about what they do and why this particular fund means so much to the community that he represents.
My name is Sophia Nabhan. I'm the Executive Director of Islamic Center of Detroit. Islamic Center of Detroit is one of the largest Islamic centers in Michigan. ICD. ICD serves an expansive community of a variety of ethnicities, ages, and socioeconomic backgrounds. ICD is constantly growing and adapting to the neighborhood's needs, serving Detroit City and the surrounding neighborhoods. In the current COVID-19 crisis, ICD expands its services to serve the community through daily meals, serving daily meals, weekly food banquets, doing some mental wellness programs, family assistance, family cash assistance, and parenting. Also, we do some special programs for kids during this hard time. No one can deny that the undocumented community has been underserved in the whole nation. Actually, sometimes being targeted, like the eastern news about forcing out the international students to be out of USA just because they are international students without doing anything illegal. Detroit is one big family, and this fund will support family and neighbors that were left behind through these difficult times. In Detroit, we look out for our neighbors, look out for each others. This is what we do in Detroit. We show up for each other. Today Detroit is not only talking, it's actually acting and doing something about it. You know, when you don't feel pain, you are not alive. And if you don't feel others' pain, you are not a human. For my community, the Arab-American community and Muslim community, l'ichwa et l'achawat arabe-américains fi mazin Detroit, l'gher pasid al vatsaiko rasmiya. Il an biwesge kum nintisal bemarkes islami mazin Detroit, l'hasoul ala musaadat maliya li a'anet kum fi havi zrouf al sahba, thna COVID-19. Al rajaa lidisal bina fijimarkes islami, l'masaadat kum fi kthir min hajat, wa ahmha zrouf al maliya tagishon ha al an al sahba. Hada l'rajaa edza, fakat alaan, rajaa min l'ichwa al arabe-americans, ta'biyat al isha'a since 2020, len ho mohim lana fi mazin Detroit, limustakbal awlad kum, womustakbal ga'ilhat kum. Finally, I would like to say that Detroit is our city. It is our city as Black, White, and Brown. Detroit is our city as Hispanics, Arab-Americans, African-Americans, Asians, you name it. Detroit is our city as citizens and immigrants. And today Detroit is your city as documented and undocumented. Thank you.
So with that being said, there's a couple of things I want you guys to remember today. One is be counted, census 2020. These are moments that we need to ensure that we're counted so we have the data to show to the federal government that our state and our City of Detroit needs to be reckoned with. We have the numbers, we need the federal fundings to make sure our families and our communities are taken care of. Be counted, census 2020. As it regards the Undocu Fund, it is a safe and secure way for undocumented family members, community members to be taken care of. We are a family in the City of Detroit, no matter how you cut it, whatever language you speak, whatever color of your skin, whatever part of the world that you're from. The City of Detroit is our city. Let's not forget that. But what I'm going to do now to close it out, to kind of summarize everything, and if you have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to the illustrious Councilwoman. And before I leave, I want to thank everybody that have worked on this process. I have seen them on Zoom for the past six weeks, three or four times a week. So it's nice to see your faces. Horrible that we can't hug because that's how we greet family members, but it's great, fantastic to see all our hard work ready to operate. There are one-pagers over there for us to take to our family members and citizens to ensure that our information is put out there. There is methods and ways, and we're going to be blasting social media with this to ensure that our undocumented are taken care of. Thank you guys so much again for coming out, and I'm going to turn it over now to Raquel.
Everyone else took off their mask. So we don't really have any additional information at this point. We'll just open it up to questions, if there's questions about the fund or the process or outreach efforts.
Councilwoman, can you tell us how this money will be distributed or will it be in the form of grants, or what specific aid should people expect to have access to?
Sure. Yeah, I will turn that over to the sub-grantees, who are going to be the ones that have that conversation with residents.
Yes, so the partner organizations will each get an initial amount of money as sub-grant, and as it's used up, then it'll be replenished. So there's an application process and an amount per family depending on the number of people in the family. So different organizations will have different ways of distributing it. It may be through a check or cash or a gift card, and they can use it for paying things like rent, buying food, diapers, whatever it is that that family is in need of, paying their utility bills, so any kind of emergency needs.
And do you envision sort of the average size of your grant based on the size of the family or need?
It'll range between 500 and 2,000. So they're not huge amounts, but every little bit helps.
And could you give us the names of the organizations again that will be distributing the money?
Sure.
They're on the one-pager.
Yeah, it's on the one-pager, but it's also, there's five altogether.
Yeah, the detailed info, and my chief of staff is passing it, I was on the one-pager, so definitely grab that before you leave. Any other questions about, yeah, anything that was shared today?
I may have lost the translation. How many people are we charging?
Say that again, how many people?
How many individual families are expected to be sued by the federal?
So within the city, the immigrant population as a whole, we estimate to be roughly around 6.1%. Within that depending range of maybe solely undocumented households might be around 8,000. We anticipate the need to be closer to 20,000 given the mixed-status families. Because say I am a U.S. citizen, or forgive me, my children are U.S. citizens and I am not, then my children didn't necessarily receive support. Or if I'm married to a green card holder. So if I come from a mixed-status family in terms of immigration status, I wouldn't necessarily have been eligible for the federal funding. So we are estimating it probably, again, low end would be around 8,000, high end would be close to 20,000. So all of the groups here today already have lists of close to 100 folks who they are sure are undocumented that have kind of been waiting. And to the credit of many of the groups here and others, people have really been creative and doing GoFundMes and just securing donations through their own outreach efforts to be able to support these families. So again, we are super grateful to the Open Societies Foundation because they're one of the few foundations in the country that is recognizing the need of this community and stepping up to support them financially. Sure. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, in terms of protecting the information people apply, because obviously it's very sensitive, I'm sure that's kept some people with their heads down. What assurance and protections do you have that someone won't try to subpoena that, that the feds won't try and find some pretext to say, "Thanks for getting it for us, we're going to take it, we're going to do it"?
Sure. So the application, we definitely took that into consideration when coming up with the application process. So the database that's being used is secured, and again, it can only be accessed by the five organizations. In addition to that, we actually aren't keeping documents. So people can show them, but we're not actually going to keep them on file. And as soon as the funds are dispersed, any information that we do retain will be destroyed and will be deleted. And so in the interim, we won't have to like worry about storing files because we're not keeping anything, we're just simply having people show it to us. And the information that is being collected is really just kind of name and address. And again, once all the monies are dispersed, that information will be deleted.
Has there been research done to make sure that there's no legal pretext for somebody trying to get that man's stuff?
Sure. Given that this is coming from a foundation, it's not subject to FOI in the same way that maybe city funds might be. So there's that level of protection in there. And again, there's confidentiality agreements that all of the partners are signing. We don't anticipate that the fund will be subjected to different subpoenas, again, because it's not a government fund per se, and the amount of information being collected is really minimal. Sure. Go ahead, yes.
Do you think the funds are going to go for international students? Are there enough monies?
Great question. So we talked about that as a group, and we really wanted to prioritize folks who truly fall in the undocumented community. There are other support programs available for international students. We recognize that there's some unique cases where some people might not qualify or it might be difficult for them to get that support, but we were all committed to making sure that we are supporting the undocumented community specifically. And if we do connect with an international student, to connect them to the resources available that are out there for them. So there's a little bit of a difference. If you're here as an international student, you usually have some type of visa. You may receive support from the university or from members back at home, whereas folks in the undocumented community face a little bit more challenges. Thank you. Yes.
I just, I wanted to mention too that we've set up a referral process for people who may apply, who may not be eligible, so that we just are not telling people, "No, that we have other sources that we can help people."
Yeah, and on that, we recognize that the fund, again, is only a certain amount of money, and people may have other needs. So all of these groups are social service agencies that provide So all of these groups are social service agencies that provide other types of support. So they're able to kind of provide, you know, comprehensive wraparound services and connect them to other agencies if they need help with, let's say, like finding diapers or applying for a job or taking advantage of the, you know, the city's program to get your GED, your high school diploma. So all of the organizations are well-connected and trusted within the community and have resources to be able to supplement applicants with beyond the fund. Cool. Any other questions? Yeah. So the fund was created in a way thinking about the emergency in terms of need. So there's folks who literally, as Sadie mentioned, have been since March unemployed with no kind of support for their families. So given that, there's a lot of sometimes bureaucracy and red tape when there's a city fund that's set up. We wanted to figure out the most speediest way that we could do this in a way that would protect people's information. And there was trust. So yes, folks may trust us, but we are also governmental entities. So we wanted to make sure it was really grassroots organizations who are on the front line serving these communities. So that was really what was at the forefront. That said, we definitely would love to create a fund within the Office of Immigrant Affairs within the city that can be leveraged in different ways to continue to support immigrant communities throughout the city of Detroit, whether they're undocumented or not. So I think that's a longer term conversation and strategy. Anybody else? Okay. Cool. So just to wrap up, just want to reemphasize that this fund is really an affirmation of our values as a city, as community organization, and really just as human beings. This fund embodies our commitment to family, love, justice, and equity. We know that we are stronger city, state, and country when everyone is taken care of and we all have the opportunity to fulfill our potential. The virus doesn't discriminate, and neither should we. We are in this together, and we must make sure always to stand up and take care of our most valuable members in our community to make sure that they're not left behind. So again, I want to thank everyone who worked tirelessly on Zoom for their patience with me when I was super tired and had no more diplomacy left in my bucket there, but to push this forward and to make it happen. And I am super excited about the thousands of families we'll be able to help in the city of Detroit in the upcoming months. And once again, want to thank so much from the bottom of my heart, Open Society Foundation for their financial contribution, and we look forward again to leveraging and making this have a much broader and longer term impact. Thank you so much.